Oh, jeez.
[laughing]
Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please, Mr. Gorsky? Oh, it's my stuff. Here.
Ms. Arminio. Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella. Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Kolponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Mr. Poy.
Here.
Mr. Prezioso.
Here.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted September 5th, 2014, I. at all schools, II. Home News Tribune, III. Cranberry Press, IV. filed with the Clerk of the municipality. We will go to number five on the agenda, which is a board update on the superintendent's search. And just, I have a short update. At last month's school board meeting, the board had a discussion in the public about utilizing New Jersey School Boards Association for the superintendent's search. And if you've read the agenda, you will notice that on the agenda this evening, under the BA's report, I believe it's the BA's report, we will be approving an agreement for their services in helping us with the search. Until that agreement is signed and approved by the board, we can't move forward with them. Yesterday, I spoke with Ms. Gwen Thornton. She is our school board rep from New Jersey School Boards, who will be working closely with us during the process. She's excited to be coming to Monroe to help us with this process. But I think we might have to schedule a date, because she unfortunately has conflicts with our next two board meetings, which I believe is September 23rd and October 15th.
Yes.
But she foresees a timeline something like this. By the time she gets and comes to talk to us, it would be October. So she would be here in October, talking to the board, getting an online survey out to the community to get their input, having the community meetings to get input from everybody that wishes to do so, and setting up a time to meet with the staff. Which brings you to November and December, which would be the time for us to do the advertising, receiving applications, and having the board go through all those applications to see who they would wish to interview. January, February, having the interview rounds, which we can have a few of them. We haven't discussed yet whether the public will be helping us interview, or the board will be doing it by themselves. That is something that Gwen is going to be talking to us with. Hopefully, by March, we will have an appointment by the Board of Education. Usually, any person that we appoint as the superintendent needs to give 60 days' notice to their district, which means they probably wouldn't start until June 1st, or most likely July 1st. And this is all very tentative at this point. One thing that she did point out is that there will be some parts of the process that can be done publicly, and that some parts of the process, the board needs to conduct in closed session for the board's protection. She did give me two dates. As I said, she won't be able to come to our next two board meetings, and we don't want to keep putting this off until the end of October, November. And right now, her calendar is free on Monday, October 6th, and Thursday, October 9th. So if you guys can look through your calendars now, maybe we could set up a date. Or if you wish to wait and look at your calendars, we could set it up on the 23rd. But I would hope to do this before the 23rd, just in case she gets booked. So...
Good for me.
Either date?
Either one.
It's Monday, October 6th, or Thursday, October 9th?
October 9th is good for me.
Better for you? Marv?
Monday, 6th.
If you're not available?
I'm not available that week.
That week? Okay.
She can't come the last week of September?
She, I talked to her yesterday, and these are the two dates. She was away on vacation for the whole month of August, and she's got a lot on her plate right now. These are the two dates that she gave me yesterday. If we can't do either one, I have to get back to her and then reschedule one for probably later than October 9th. And it would be advisable to have all the board members here, so we don't want to have a date when somebody can't come. So I'll get back to her and see what we can schedule after that. Any questions? Okay, then we will move on to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our three-minute time limit. I see Mr. Tesler coming.
Good evening, everybody. Ira Tesler, 11 L.A. Drive. Excuse me. Notice on the agenda, there is an appointment tonight about Mary Smith as a full-time position for a full-time attorney. Just want to know the thought process of hiring a full-time attorney instead of keeping the relationship as we did in the past with the law firm? And what's that budgeted for in the 14, 15 budget? And if it wasn't, where's the money coming from?
Yes?
Evening, Mr. Tesler.
Good evening.
A few meetings ago, the board passed a resolution directing me as Business Administrator, Board Secretary, to go out for an RFP, Request for a Proposal for Legal Services, and explore bids from other law firms to compare to the current firm that we were utilizing, Walens.
Right.
We did so. We put together elaborate RFP specifications. We received responses from six firms. And through closed-session deliberation with the board and other conversations, it was recommended to consider hiring an attorney as a personnel appointment instead of using a firm. The benefits of that are, number one, savings to the taxpayers, because the overall compensation package for an attorney as a personnel appointment would be under $200,000, where last year, according to our records, we paid over $315,000 to the firm of Walens alone. And the particular attorney that the board had in mind had worked for Walens and was very well-versed in all of the district's legal issues, and there would be no transitional matters as if another new law firm was to come in. So the continuity of advice, the cost savings to the taxpayers, and to have a powerful administrator in the central office was all very attractive to the board. And I was directed to negotiate a package with an attorney, and we were successful.
I know Mary will do a very good job on that, because we're familiar with her in the past. Now, I noticed we're also keeping Walens as kind of a backup on the agenda as well. Is that what the case is?
Kind of. Walens' contract is on there to shorten the term of the contract just after the anticipated approval tonight.
Okay.
So although the firm could still be utilized
Right.
For transitional matters that the board directs, I don't anticipate much of a need pursuant to my conversations with the board.
Are we going to be paying any kind of retainer going forward?
No.
Or just it's kind of a non-demand thing?
The answer is no, and it would be an hourly service as needed.
Okay. Thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak to the agenda? At this time, we will close the public forum and go to the approval of the minutes for the public Board of Education meeting of July 23rd, 2014. Would anybody, Mr. Nostine?
Second.
Mr. Ms. Arminio, I'm sorry. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the approval of the minutes for the closed-session meeting of July 23rd, 2014.
All moved.
Nostine, Ms. Antellus. Again, additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Here, abstaining.
You're abstaining from closed session?
Yes, I wasn't here.
What about the public Board of Education?
I was on the phone.
Okay. Thank you. The, number eight, is there any committees this evening that need to report? Since it's the beginning of the school year, we're just getting started. So we will go to the superintendent's report with Mr. Ventrello.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we get into my reports and recommendations, I just want to take a moment just to say this past Tuesday, Secretary of Agriculture Douglas Fisher, along with Rose Trucario, Director of the New Jersey Division of Food and Nutrition. We had some other politicians as well, from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture, Pat Tombrowski. And we also had members of the town. Government was here as well. John Riggs was here. We also had Betty Schneider. And also representatives of the Metz Culinary Management Team. They're our food services program. They visited our high schools, matter of fact, to recognize our outstanding food service program. And as they did that, they wanted to commend also Nancy Mitrasak, who's the Director of Food Services Program, and her staff. They took pleasure in eating some of the kids' food, is what they did. Everything from the whole wheat pizza to the other entrees that were there. And the big thing about this is the fact that, obviously, you know, in this day and age, it's very easy for students, even adults. I mean, obviously, there's a concern about obesity throughout the nation. But even for the students is that there is a concern about fast food being, you know, right there to, as far as access, also the sugary snacks that are available to the kids. So there are numerous mandates as far as nutrition and health guidelines. And with those guidelines, obviously, then the school districts have to scurry, obviously, to meet those guidelines by providing healthy food for the kids. But the other side of that coin also is the fact that, well, the kids have to be interested in buying that food, and interested in eating that food. And Nancy Mitrasak, to her credit and her team, as a matter of fact, has been recognized by the state of New Jersey as far as the agricultural department. And I wanted to recognize that, that they came here to Monroe to give some accolades to Nancy and to our district. So I'd like to have a round of applause for Nancy Mitrasak and also her staff as well. Also on hand, as a matter of fact, was Kathy Kari Panowicz was here as representing the Board of Education. And also Crystal Danza was the, she's the high school, I believe, the senior class president. And she shared some insights as well about food and eating healthy. So all in all, it was a great presentation. It was very good for the district. I also want to give an update to the Board of Education regarding the search for the Assistant Superintendent. Just to let you know is that we probably screened about maybe 25 to 30 applications from the last posting that went out. Out of those 25 or 30, the panel, and the panel, I'll tell you about the panel in a second, but the panel screened, we screened it down to, from the 25 or 30 applications, we screened it down to about six finalists. I should say, we screened it down to six finalists. As we did that, we had interviews last night and the night before. So Monday, Tuesday night, the entire panel was there in session. We interviewed three and three of the six finalists. And as far as the panel, the panel's made up of parents, teachers, supervisors, administrators, and central office personnel, and there were 20 of us. Certainly, it was an imposing panel as people came into the interview process. With that said, is that we'll be sharing the next round, as before the next Board of Education meeting, we'll be sharing as far as making a decision regarding the finalists coming up to the Board of Education at that time. And the Board of Education will be part of that process for the next board meeting. Okay, let's move on to the report and recommendations. Madam Board and President, it is recommended that the members of the Board of Education approve Personnel Items A through double E.
Would anybody like to accept that motion?
Second.
There's no first.
All moved.
I need a first.
All moved.
Mr. Poy, Mr. Nostine. Any comments or questions for Ms. Arminio?
Yes, Madam President.
Or Mr. Ventrello?
On page 13 of the revised agenda, I see positions for the cafeteria. I was under the impression that the cafeteria staff was hired by the company that we hire. Is that correct?
That's correct. The cafeteria workers are the employees of the Food Service Management Company, Metz. However, the district does utilize paraprofessionals to facilitate the lunch process, and they are our staff employees.
Okay, so this is staffing, this is not the food service process? This is staffing the lunchroom?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Poy?
Yes, I just wanted to see whether or not, going forward, I noticed there were several resignations of teaching staff members in items B, C, and D. And I was wondering, and I don't know if it's possible or not possible, but it would possibly, if it can be done, I think it would be informative to the members of the board if, with each of those items in the future, if we could be provided with just a brief explanation as to the reason for the resignation. And as I said, I don't know if that's legal or not.
Mr. Gorsky?
I had the opportunity to speak with counsel recently on the board member responsibilities and ethics in interviewing. And a particular court case came up recently where the Ethics Commission decided against board members' participation in exit interviews. And I'm concerned about your request, because it seems broadly that could be related to that same exit interview process, providing information why they're leaving and so on. According to counsel, it was a prohibited act for board members to engage in the exit interview process.
Okay, I understand that point. But I would appreciate it if you could explore with the attorney whether or not, once we have arrived at the point of recommending the resignation of someone be accepted, as to whether or not the board could be informed. You know, is it a matter of moving? Is it a matter of family care? Is it a matter, whatever, you know?
Doug, if I could address as far as, you know, these particular instances here, is that one was a leave position. I won't give you any information other than what I have. But one was a leave position and went to a full-time position in another district. Another one did not want to share anything in the resignation. Obviously, they're entitled to that. Another one was a three-month leave position that they had here, and they left us to go get a full-time, a full-year leave position somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Arminio?
And I was familiar with the case that we discussed, but I do think that if, I think the only reason why, I don't know, I'm not going to say why he said that, but it would be my interest also in case there was some kind of problem that we needed to address as a board.
An issue, sure.
Yeah. An issue. So but if you, as, you know, superintendent, feel that we're not, we don't have a generic problem that we need to be addressed or be advised of, that would be okay?
Now, many of these type of positions, they're just, you know, it's just commonplace, even, especially when it comes to so many of the leave positions in any school district. Is that, you know, teachers as, you know, obviously, when they're thinking about their families and paying the bills like everybody else, they're going for whatever the best opportunity is. And sometimes, you know, taking a three-month leave position here, well, as you sign up on board, or maybe you're on board for that position, and then there's another leave position out there, another full-time position that comes available, obviously, they're going.
I'm not hearing you. You mean, like, a leave of absence, when they take a leave of absence?
Yes.
And then they resign after the leave of absence?
Or even sometimes as they have the position, as we hire them, et cetera, is that sometimes that they want to leave and go someplace else.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. Perhaps what you can do to get some of this information, because I think it would be very important for the Personnel Committee to be able to have this data, perhaps once a year on an annual basis, because it happens all year, right? You get an aggregated report of, not the individuals, but here's everybody that resigned, and you had 18 people that resigned because of this, 15 people that resigned to this, so that at least that, the aggregated data can be assessed by the Personnel Committee to see if there are any things that we, as a board, can look at.
Well, I think that we should take that under consideration, because that would kind of, knowing this report, there's three people, there's three issues, and we don't want to attach an issue to a person.
Right. Aggregated, this is what we know.
That would be better.
Because we want to fix the clauses, not, because the people left already, right? So you can't really do much about that.
I'm not hearing too well tonight, so I'd appreciate it if you'd all speak into the microphone. But I think I heard somebody say, "You're going to let us know when we're not privy to something." Did I hear that? Would it be possible to give us a list of those things that are in 18A that we're not privy to?
For the Board of Education members from Legal Counsel, 18A?
I acknowledge that the town, the town people are privy to a lot more than we are. That's evident.
Anyone else? Well, before we have a roll call, I just want to piggyback on something that Dennis said about our district food service program being recognized. In the past year, this is just, I think, one of many recognitions we've had. Monroe Township High School was ranked number 39 in the state from U.S. News and World Report. We were named to the AP Honorable District for increasing access to AP coursework while maintaining or increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or above per college board. We were named for, to innovate New Jersey for our innovative programs such as MECA, iTunes University, Avid, the iPad One-on-One Initiative, special ed programs, and our mobile edible wall unit, which we were recognized for yesterday. We were named to the 2014 Top 10 transformative schools in the country for technology. This one I'll save till later. Our transportation efficiency is ranked among the highest in the state, and yesterday, our food service program was recognized for being one of the best in the state. This is why we're getting an influx of students into our district. Everybody wants to come to Monroe, because we're recognized all over the state for what we do here. And it's kudos to our boards and our administration for planning, because it takes a lot of planning. You don't, you don't, it just doesn't happen in one night, or overnight, or even in a year or two. Takes a lot of planning and being able to foresee some of the things in the future. So I just think this is a great honor that we accomplished and added to yesterday. So if there's no further questions, Mr. Gorsky, we'll have a roll call.
This is Personnel Items A through double E. Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes to all, but I'm going to recuse on BB.
Double B, so noted. Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella? Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes, and recuse myself on item U.
So noted. Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Okay.
Madam Board President?
Yes.
Personnel Items A through double E passes. Thank you.
Madam Board and President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve items on the Board Action A through J.
Mr. Braverman? Who would like to second? Ms. Nostine? Comments or questions for Mr. Ventrello? Mr. Poy?
Yes, item H deals with rescinding a resolution that we passed previously relating to the ad hoc committee meeting. I was just curious as to when will be the next meeting of that committee? Has that been set yet?
Did we set a date yet? I think, did we set September 29th?
We were waiting for the action item to pass tonight, and then it was going to be scheduled tomorrow, tentatively for September 29th, at 6:30. Announcement to come.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, I was wondering how that, this item came to be on the agenda.
I do have a statement.
Okay.
At an earlier Board of Education meeting, there was a motion made by Mr. Nostine, seconded by Mr. Chiarella, to have the next ad hoc committee meeting advertised as a special Board of Education public meeting. Letter H, which we know, under the Board Action Items today, recommends rescinding that motion. The ad hoc committee is not a meeting of the Board of Education. Rather, it is a meeting of the ad hoc committee, and thus, no action would be taken at that meeting. Also, it is not chaired by any member of the Board of Education, but is chaired by Mr. Joe Homoki, whom was appointed to that position. A Board of Education chair cannot relinquish their position as a chair at a board meeting so that they are able to turn it over to a chair of another committee outside of the Board of Education. The ad hoc committee was created at my direction as Board President for the specific purpose of discussing our growing student population and our facility needs. Since its creation, the ad hoc committee has periodically met to discuss this important topic. And it is my understanding that the ad hoc committee is nearing the end of its deliberation process, and will soon be in a position to make a recommendation to the Board of Education. Several board members who are not part of the ad hoc committee had expressed an interest in attending the ad hoc committee, thus the motion for the Special Board of Education Committee. These individuals would not be attending if we had a separate ad hoc committee as part of the Board of Education, but as interested community members. They are not authorized to speak or act on behalf of the Board of Education during the ad hoc committee. But it is my understanding that those board members attending the ad hoc committee, who are not part of the committee, will be there merely to observe the committee meeting and will not be participating in any respect, and therefore, the rescinding on the agenda today. In other words, to make it short, if it's an open Board of Education committee meeting, I cannot turn over the responsibilities of chairing to the chair of the ad hoc committee. The only thing the ad hoc chair would be able to do at a board meeting is give us a recommendation. And since the ad hoc committee can't meet, because right now, they're meeting under the Board of Education, they won't have any recommendation to give us. So we will be having an ad hoc committee meeting, which the board members will be able to attend as part of the public. Then we will have the recommendation to the Board of Education, and it will be open to the public for their comments and questions. Ms. Arminio?
Will the ad hoc committee be videotaped for us to put on the?
We have not taped it yet, but we can talk to the chair about doing that, because that's...
And then we can put it, I mean, I think, I think it would, it served the greater public to know what has been discussed.
And they're, the public is invited to attend, they just won't be able to participate or deliberate in the process. So that's why letter H is, or letter H is on the agenda.
So it's not, so in other words, though, it doesn't also have to be formally advertised either? Is that, is that the?
No.
It's not going to be, well, could we put it, can I, can I make a request to put it on the website?
Yes.
As a meeting open to the public?
Yes.
Yes. It's not required to be advertised like a public meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act, but we were going to get the word out as best we can, including posting it on the website and emailing all the previous attendees to the meeting, communicating to the principals to get the word out. Most importantly, to make sure we have a good cross-section of the entire township represented in the town's interests on the ad hoc committee.
I think that would serve us well to sort of supply evidence for our strategic plan as well, as many people as we can encourage to, you know, at least witness what's going on.
Right.
That would help our strategic plan.
I agree.
And communicate to the public. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Nostine?
There's been some bantering going back and forth with regards to who's on the committee. I had originally requested a list of who's on the committee. I received that list, and basically, it was the sign-in sheet from the last meeting. My name was on there, and I'm not on the committee. I then requested the personnel that basically was assigned, I assume, by Madam Board President, and I did receive that list. I would just like a clarification of, on the meeting on the 29th, is anybody who shows up going to be able to have their, basically, a vote, even though technically, it's not a vote? I get that, because there can't be any action. But just like we do with our committee meetings, we'll say, what's the consensus? If anybody shows up at this 29th meeting, will their voice be able to have that consensus and actually carry the deliberation process forward?
No. If they're not on the committee list now, there will be no new people added to the list. There's only probably two more meetings. I think the next meeting on the 29th is in regard to redistricting, and then there should be one more in regard to the facility needs of the district.
So basically, that first list that you gave me is the only people that can really have a consensus into this recommendation? Is that?
Yeah, and I didn't see that list that you got. Mr. Gorsky, did you?
Madam? Yes. The confusion is because there was an initial list. No one was appointed to this committee. The Chair, Chairman Homoki opened it up to anybody who wanted to attend, invited a broad section of the township so that we have a good, again, cross-section of the whole[1777.53] section of the township so that we have a good, again, cross-section of the whole community. And over time, the attendance dwindled. So we solicited more attendees who would be Committee members through the school story and other outreach efforts, which may include how you came about to join, I'm not sure. But in any event, anybody who showed up and participated in the meeting over time was added to the Committee. And what we'll do after your concern is certainly speak with Mr. Homoki and make sure we have a defined Committee list before the meeting, and that will include those who have a stake in the recommendation that ultimately will come to the Board.
Thank you.
Yeah, at one point, we had more Board members and administrators on the Committee than we had community members, and both Mr. Homoki and I felt that that wasn't a good cross-section of the community. The meeting, the Ad-Hoc was formed because of, whatever we do, we would like the community support to back us in regard to, I don't want to use the word referendum, but if we decide to put an addition on, or build a new school, or redistrict, we needed the community's support. So we opened it up to therefore get more people on the Committee. Ms. Arminio?
Yes, I'm not sure what the list says, but I know that prior to my being elected to this Board, I had offered to be on the, so I don't know, am I on the list?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, because that's not the list. I saw a list that did not have my name on it, I just wanted to be clear.
No, I know that you were here from almost the very beginning, so you definitely were, should be, on the list.
You were on the list, all right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Preziosso?
Item I, policy. I see most of them are mandated here, but I also see something that says "new" and mandated. Does this go for approval even though it doesn't go before the Committee?
I believe all these policies went before the Committee.
Yes.
We didn't have a policy meeting last month.
It was previous to that.
Anyone else? Then we will have a roll call.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes, and recuse myself on item G.
Recuse on G, thank you. Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through J...
I gotta recuse on G.
...passes. And Mr. Kaufman has recused also on G. Action item still passes.
Okay. We will go, does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Very nice. And then we will go to Mr. Gorsky.
Thank you. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through J be approved by consent roll call.
Second.
Mr. Braverman? Second by Mr. Preziosso. Any other questions on Mr. Gorsky's report? One? Ms. Arminio?
This includes the bill list, is that correct, Mr. Gorsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I had a question on the Apple services.
Yes.
I believe, is that, is that the final lease payment for that?
Yes, ma'am. There is an approximate four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar expenditure which represents the district's final lease payment obligation on the three-year lease for the iPad units.
And that, and when will that expire? I should know that, but I don't remember.
When will...
The lease?
The lease expires technically with the satisfaction of the last payment. So now we own the devices, and the matter is now concluded.
Do we anticipate having to buy new devices, or refresh, I think the word is "refresh"?
That's a good question. I don't think that issue's going to be looked at until we have an Assistant Superintendent who's got some time to commit to the subject matter. Also, it will involve the Superintendent, and most importantly, a Committee. Hopefully, it's anticipated that this Committee will discuss and research many different devices to see if it serves the district needs, and to provide research on the effectiveness of the initiative that we currently have, and to go forth and continue to commit district resources towards technology and instruction.
Could I ask that maybe at the next meeting, we might get an idea of how many books have been downloaded onto the devices for use in this year?
Sure. Yes, I'll check that. How many books have been downloaded for use within the iPads?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see the use of the iPads and how...
I believe that's called an eBook.
eBook, iBook, iBook.
Whatever you want.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
They're all eBooks regardless of what we're, like, I know we have Pearson and all those other things. That will include all of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, Ms. Arminio, whenever we get new students in the high school, we purchase the iPads for them?
Right, then I'm aware. Okay.
Mr. Preziosso?
Who would be on the Committee?
I think it's a little too premature to figure that out until we get a new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and have them look into the iPad issues and see where they want to go with it.
Okay, before the Committee's formed, would it go before the Board?
The Committee?
No, no, no. With the way you decide if you want parents, or teachers, or, will it come before us to discuss?
No, we don't usually form those Committees. We would form a Committee if it's an Ad-Hoc Committee, if it's a Board of Education Committee, or if it's a Committee to appoint a new Superintendent. That's the, I believe, the responsibilities of the Board of Education. Anything else would be, just like Mr. Ventrello formed his Committee for the Assistant Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent would form a Committee to look at the technology piece.
Okay.
Any other questions? Can we both have a roll call?
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, recuse on G.
So noted. Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through J passes, and that concludes my report.
Okay, we will go to the Board President's report. I have a couple of things. The first is the September 2014 issue of New Jersey Monthly Magazine has ranked Monroe Township High School number eighty-two in the state, up from one-hundred-and-fourteen last year. Making the top-one-hundred list of New Jersey Monthly has been something that we've been striving for, for many years. And I know it's Mr. Homoki's, one of his big things, when he was back here as Board President, he was very in tune to trying to get us to the top-one-hundred, and for the first time, we have met the top-one-hundred. And I think the administration and the staff at the high school should be commended for this important achievement, so very, very exciting news for us. The second piece is, I have been asked by Ms. Sharon Saylor, the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Advocate, to sit on a state advocacy group. This group is being formed for those districts who are experiencing rapid student growth and a lack of school aid from the state. The purpose of this group is to visit with state legislators to discuss this serious topic and to move legislation that has already been introduced in the state by the Senator Jim Whalen and Assemblyman Chris Brown. And this is really important, because during the month of August alone, we registered one-hundred-and-fifty new students in our district, and that's the amount of new students that we had expected during the entire school year. And if we take one-hundred-and-fifty students, time twelve months, that's fifteen-hundred students, which I don't think we're going to get. But at that rate, we would have many more students in this district and no place to put them. So having that many new students coming in at the very beginning of the year affected everything we did, from transportation to classroom issues, and especially the financial issue. It is my hope that adding Monroe's voice to the other districts that are in the same predicament that we are will help us accomplish something more than we are getting alone in our own voice. So we haven't met yet, but I will keep you informed of those when we do and what is accomplished through that Committee. And my last piece is at the August twentieth Board of Education meeting, there were some remarks made during the second public forum that I believe questioned my ethics and my character. Since this was a public meeting, and those remarks were made publicly, I'm sure that Mr. Ryback won't have any problem with my reply. It is true that I responded to questions and comments that were made on Facebook in regard to our former Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Gorman, and the reasons why he was leaving our district. This was not the first time I have done that, but it never seemed to be an issue until now. I don't know how many times me and other members of this Board responded when the new high school was being built, that there is no pull in the new high school. Nobody had an issue with that. Dr. Gorman knew exactly what I was posting, where I was posting, and I had his permission to do so. I stated at the, I stated that at the June twentieth Board of Education meeting, Dr. Gorman's contract was not approved by the majority of the Board as required. It was letter S on the agenda in June, and it stated that we were approving the contract for Dr. Gorman. Three Board members voted no, and two Board members were conflicted out of the voting process. This was accurate statement and public knowledge. I made no mention of the names of those three who did not vote yes, nor the two who, Board members who were conflicted out of the process. I then stated that Dr. Gorman felt he was not supported by the Board, and he felt he needed to look at other options. This is also true because it was a quote from Dr. Gorman, and he said the same thing to many other people in the district. And I think we know what the elephant in the room is, the upcoming Board election. I don't have control over what other people say in public, or what other people write on social media, but I'm not stupid enough to think that at this point, everything I say, everything I do, everything I write will be used against me in the next couple of months. And to that end, I asked Mr. Gorsky to have my post checked with our attorney, just to make sure that I didn't commit any ethics violations and that nobody could file an ethics claim against me, because I didn't feel that what I did was ethically wrong. Mr. Gorsky, do you have an update on that?
Yes. Pursuant to your request, I gained access to Facebook. I printed out all of the posts that you had been involved with, and all the parties involved were identified and provided to the attorneys. The attorney's main question surrounding this issue was, did Dr. Gorman grant his permission to you in order for you to represent his comments in that fashion on social media? The answer was yes, he provided that permission to you in writing. So the attorney's advice on the matter was she was satisfied that there was no ethics violation, and there was no wrongdoing on your behalf with this social media posting issue.
Thank you. And I think I'll leave it at that. And that concludes my report. So we will go to any other Board of Education business, number twelve on the agenda. Is there any other business by any member of the Board of Education? I saw Mr. Nostine's hand first, so we will go to him.
I just want to applaud all the staff and the administration of the district. It's my understanding we had a fantastic and very, very successful school opening. It's, especially with one-hundred-and-fifty new students, to do that as effortlessly as they make it look is really a credit to the district, a credit to the staff, and I just really would like to applaud them, because I heard nothing but positive comments from parents regarding that. So I'd like to thank the district, the teachers, and whoever was involved in making it look easy, because that's really what they do. Also, I have a question regarding the goal-setting meeting that we had. I'm wondering, what is the timetable to have Al from the New Jersey School Boards Association come back and kind of detail and document exactly what our goals are going forward?
Tom, first, I want to say thank you very much as far as your recognition of the staff, the teachers, et cetera, as far as opening. Sometimes you know is that we get involved in our roles, and sometimes you know as Board members you have your role and your responsibilities as well, and we tend to forget that, you know, we're a district, a unified district, that we're all in this together for the sake of the children and the community and residents. So with that is that I just want to say thank you very much for that on behalf of the staff. As far as, we did receive a report from Al, and I have that report, you have that report, I believe, Mr. Gorsky has that report. I'll be sharing that with you in your Friday report, so this way you all have that information. You can take a look at that, and then the conversations will begin after that.
Fantastic, thank you.
And then they should, those goals should be on the Board Agenda on the twenty-third for us to accept. And we only got the report last night, so I know that, I don't think we've had a chance to really digest it yet. Anyone else who has, Mr. Preziosso?
I'd like to make a correction. I approved the closed-session meeting. I need to abstain.
In the minutes?
Yes.
And you were not here. We'll make that correction.
So you're abstaining, correct? Thank you, so noted.
Anyone else? Mr. Braverman?
I'd like to speak to the process that you used for interviewing the new Assistant Superintendent. I think it's wrong to have twenty-six people from a, from the community, including teachers, administrators, union members, parents, et cetera, interviewing prospective, or interviewing candidates, and I think screening them for the Superintendent, the Acting Superintendent, am I understanding the process correctly?
That's correct, Marvin.
And then the Superintendent, the Acting Superintendent, is going to interview that individual or individuals and make a recommendation to the Board of Education, to the Board of Education who hasn't seen anybody. They have less involvement in this than the public at large. I think that's wrong. I'm speaking to the process. I understand that the Superintendent of Schools makes the recommendation. I understand that. I tried to call the New Jersey School Boards to get some input on this. They didn't return my call. So I looked at eighteen A. I didn't see anywheres in eighteen A that it said the Board of Education members cannot collaborate with the Superintendent on an interview. So I'm really distraught, maybe amused. The last time I questioned something, that was told to me by an attorney at the Board of Education. I questioned it, and everybody laughed at me. At the following Board meeting, the attorney apologized publicly because he was wrong. I don't know where this came from, that the Board members can't do the interviewing collaboratively with the Superintendent, but I'd like to see it in black and white in eighteen A.
Mr. Gorsky, do you want to respond?
Yes. In responding to Mr. Braverman's comments, the Board received attorney advice on this matter in closed session. The Board received attorney advice on this matter in closed session.
Sure you did.
So, you know, no Board member on their own can waive attorney-client privilege to divulge that conversation at this time, but I would like to read to you some comments from school boards today that I've asked my secretary to furnish with all the Board. We just received this some moments ago. She says, "Hello, Mike. In response to your question about a Board member's role in hiring teachers, et cetera, best practice would dictate the following. Board members should not be present nor participate in interviews for teachers, as this is an administrative function, and to be present and/or participate comes dangerously close to crossing the line between oversight, policy development, and appraisal, which are the appropriate domains for Board members. Board member can and should appropriately ask questions, see attachment, which I'll be sending to the Board, for samples of those questions. The Superintendent should be prepared to respond to questions that Board members may have about a candidate, and the Board can review the resumes and applications of the candidates. Board members may vote no on any personnel recommendation of the Superintendent, as long as their vote is not arbitrary or capricious." And she offers her guidance if you, if any Board member would like to speak with her about that. So, you know, our conversation surrounded, it would be permissible certainly for a Board member... And... member, and I think this is not inconsistent with what was discussed, for board members to be present during interviews and observe, especially for the levels of assistant superintendent and principal, but it would be improper for board members to direct questions or provide the superintendent with a recommendation or any analytical work from the interview process. She feels that's crossing the line, and I think that's consistent with the advice that we received before. If a board member had a specific question, they could furnish it to the superintendent, and he, and he could consider that for the, for the interview process.
Obviously, for the last 20 years, with three superintendents, we have not been doing the best practices, but we've been hiring the best people. So maybe we shouldn't do the best practices. Maybe we should keep doing what we've been doing. We've been hiring good people, and we were able to intelligently vote yes or no when the name came up. Now, you're telling me that I'm really not permitted to be, to interview, and yet eventually the superintendent is going to name the person that they would like to, us to hire, and then I have the right to say no? Unless you're telling me that once the person is named and everybody would be a carbon copy, just say yes. I will not do that, and I can tell you now, if I'm not interviewing, even if it's not the best practice, I will not vote for that candidate.
Anyone, Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. Sorry, I have more than I usually have at this point. I wanted to let everybody know, I watched a video from the August 23rd special meeting that you had. Of course, I couldn't be here, have to go on vacation sometime, you guys picked the week that I was going away. But I did want to commend the board because it was very refreshing to finally see, especially for the new board members, it's such a world of difference when you're on that side of the microphone, and you come over to this side of the microphone, and you start understanding all the intricacies of how the board operates and all the things, and how the hip bones connect it to the thigh bone, and, and the complexity of how the board runs. It was really good to see Al manage the group, have a very good session, and kind of get everybody going along the same path to think about these, these really, really big decisions that we have to make, especially related around the finances and the budget philosophy that we have to do. So it really did a really good justice to the entire board because it was a really good meeting. In addition to that, it also sets the stage for some heavy decisions that are to be decided on in the near future by this board, and having that information, having that baseline knowledge is going to help you make some very serious decisions that will be coming up shortly that this board has to decide on, fairly big-ticket items, so it was really good to see. I also want to just touch on a couple of comments that were made, and just maybe give a little bit of background on some decisions that have happened over the course of the years, at least I've been on the board here. Doug, you asked a great question about how do we know we're doing well? You know, what are the parameters that we can use to figure that out? Kathy, thanks to, thanks for the report tonight, the recognition that we're getting, the increasing in the state numbers and the ranking of the high school, and, and these are, these are empirical things that we could see that kind of speak to, you know, is it, is it tech? Is it teachers? It's really, you can't really find what really is the silver bullet, but I think it really is a collaboration of a whole lot of things that really is changing the district around and getting a lot of recognition that I think we kind of all agree that we deserve. There was some discussion about the committees and how they've been formed, and why don't we have a tech committee, and how did, we had a tech and then tech went away. When I first got on the school board back in the day, we did have a tech committee, and over the years that we, we started to evolve and change the way the district would function, it became pretty apparent that there weren't enough things for the technology to, committee to do on a regular basis to warrant a separate committee on technology. So we decided to, you know, envelop the technology component into the curriculum committee because they really do work hand in hand. Some board members will also remember, back in the day, we had a separate buildings committee, we had a separate grounds committee, we had a separate transportation committee. So when we did the, we looked at the committees back in those days, we realized the same thing. It really wasn't enough to have separate committees for each one of those, combine them all because they kind of interrelate, and that's why we kind of combined them to B, G, and T, and that's kind of how we came up to where we are today. So I thought I'd add a little bit of background and color to that type of stuff, because back in the day, some of you may remember, I used to do the technology reports. So I think, it was really, really good to see everybody working really well. One thing that was a little bit disturbing to me, and I guess it just, it just me personally, but, you know, I guess, you know, everybody has a right to approve or disapprove things. We have to keep in mind that. Decisions that we make here as a board, as a sitting body, are based on the things that relate to this school. Decisions we make here should not be dependent on other activities from other groups or government committees or government boards that either do do things in this district or don't do things in this district. Decisions we make here, whether you vote yes or no on something, should be based on the things that we do here. They should not be based on a dependency on things that are outside influences that we do not have control over. So I would just recommend that as we move forward and we think about these things in big pictures, that we keep that in mind. We have to decide moving forward on what we do here and how it affects our kids. If we say we're voting no on a particular item, and you have a good reason, make sure that it's, it's two things. Have a good reason, but make sure the focus is on things that we can control here. There's a lot of things we can do. We talked about our ability to control growth and can't control growth, and Mr. Klein all the time coming in here about all the different rulings all over the state. We have to keep focused on what we can do and what we control here. That's our job when we are here. Last thing. Anybody in the room know who Jim Samuel Jr. is? Anybody in the room? Okay. Jim Samuel Jr. happens to be Monroe Township alumnus from class of 1989, who is the only person who passed away at this December, September 11th disaster in 2001. We have a bench out in the middle school now, which used to be the high school back in the day, commemorating or at least acknowledging Jim. That bench is in very bad shape. It's a wood bench, it's, I don't, you know, it, it really needs to look, be looked at, and I think I would ask that we kind of bring that over before the Buildings and Grounds Committee to see what we can do to really put something there that's, that's permanent. We have a lot of markers for other students that we, we recognize and in memory of. It should be the same thing for Jim. It's, it's a tragedy. Tomorrow's a, a big day of remembrance, and I would just recommend that we take a look at this Buildings and Grounds. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
Just very quickly, also, thank you for the grand opening of the school year. It was done well, and thanks to all the, the bus and transportation personnel because that's key, especially in the first weeks of school. I'd like to also welcome new students, welcome new staff members, and thank all the returning staff members and teachers for starting such a good new, new school year. I'd also like to welcome the new members of the public that are coming, some for the first time. Thank you for coming, and I hope to see you on a regular basis when, when time provides. So we are a wonderful community here, and public participation is essential, and we'd like to move forward with, with everybody's participation. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anyone else? Mr. Poy?
A couple of items. First of all, I think that was terrific news you shared with us about our latest ranking in the New Jersey Monthly, so I really welcome that. I would appreciate if we could have some kind of an update on the vacancy for the supervisor of Technology Business and Fine Arts. I haven't heard anything about that lately, so I'd just like to kind of know where we are with that one. And then I have one other item, but I'll let you answer that one first.
So if I can respond, just let you know that we were waiting for approval of certification.
Okay, thank you. And I think it was today I was reading in the Star Ledger that some districts are looking at their, the, the food program, and we were talking about that earlier this evening. Some districts are looking at the food program in terms of how well it might be meeting the needs of their diverse communities, and I, I think it might be beneficial, and I don't know what committee it would be, or if it would be here to the whole board, if we could have Ms. Mitresak come in and explain to us how she goes about identifying changes in the menu. For example, are we providing for students that might be vegetarian? Are we providing a variety of foods in terms of the ethnicity of the students that we have in the district? I found the article interesting and worthwhile, and I think we all acknowledge the fact that food is an important part of every person's culture, and if we have a large ethnic group in the township and, and we're not providing during the, the lunch program, we're not providing any of those options for them, then maybe we should consider doing that. So I'm basically requesting that either Ms. Mitresak appear at a, at the appropriate committee meeting, or here with the full board and kind of explore that with us, if she would.
I think she should take us on a tour of the cafeteria, because it's like being in the food court. There are so many options there for, for kids, and it's amazing. And to add to, Ms. Arminio, I happened to be at the recognition yesterday, and just being in the school, it's like there was no summer vacation. It's like June and September, and the kids were back in school, they didn't miss a beat, staff didn't miss a beat, and in your, in regard to food service, I think my favorite item was the, what was it, the Caesar salad pizza. I've never seen that before, so I, I think we need to have a tour of the kitchen.
Mr. Gorski?
Just to provide some information now, although I appreciate the recommendation from Ms. Mitresak to look at the, the cultural needs of the community. The Department of Agriculture and the New Jersey Division of Child Nutrition provides very rigorous guidelines on what constitutes a Type A lunch, how many grains are permitted in there, how much fat content, how much salt. It's extraordinarily regulated and audited. It seems like every other year we have an audit from the Department of Child Nutrition where they come in and they review everything from storage practices to the grain chart that's posted on the wall for students' benefit, the food pyramid it used to be called, and we've always been in full compliance with the law, but I don't recall the law having a concern over the cultural needs of the community. So that's an interesting point, and we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, and I, I'm not in any way criticizing the food program. I've heard some very good comments from students about the, the change that was made last year. I, I'm just simply saying that it would be interesting to see what they are doing to try to appeal to the diversity of students we have in the district. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Orin, tell us.
I'd like to expand a little bit about that diversity. You know, I, I come from a very diverse background. I have a nephew who's Spanish, I have a niece whose father's from India, I'm Jewish, we have, my daughter's married to an Italian, so we're a very diverse group. And that's changing, that, that diversity is happening all over New Jersey. And I've noticed in South Brunswick that they've looked at their population and said, started looking at holidays. So I think we start, need to take a look at our population and take a look at the holidays that they celebrate. Dr. Hamilton and I had talked about this a couple of times, and, and I think it's time with our community to take a look at different, say it's Diwali or maybe some other holidays that some of our different populations might celebrate, be a little bit more sensitive in the.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our three-minute limit.
My name is Ajay Kumar. My address is 5 Villa Farm Circle, Monroe, New Jersey. Madam Board President and members of the board, you must be doing a good job. That's why I moved in this community a few years ago, and as we just found out, the, this school system isn't one of the first 101s. Unlike me, a lot of other folks are moving in this community, and that's why you have a lot of new students coming over. I just want to touch base on the, the diversity comments that were made and the, and the holiday festivals that were made. I just did some Wikipedia before I came to this meeting, and my understanding is we have more than 12% Asian Indians in this school, and this is from 2010. A lot of friends are moving in. We still don't have any Indian holidays being celebrated over here, like Diwali, that you rightfully mentioned. I'd really appreciate if you can just consider it, just put it somewhere in your agenda, knowing how much community we have from this, this Indian, Asian sector, if one of those, or whatever we can do to, to bring the culture, bring the community together. So the kids will feel more, more connected. And, and as, I'm vegetarian, and, and as we just talked about the lunch over here, when my kids go, I'm, I'm sure there are hundreds of option over there, but when my kids go to the, the lunch room, they just find one macaroni cheese. That's the only vegetarian option, the option that they can find over there. So I'm sure there are good programs. I'm just, just bringing to your attention that we need to be culturally sensitive about it. There are a lot of Spanish, Indians, Asians in this community that are bringing, that are coming together, and we need to be more culturally sensitive about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Cam Kala for Keswick Circle. So I don't know how many of the board members were informed, but many of my fellow town residents were involved in hosting a Sikh games here on August 9th and 10th. As a result of those Sikh games, it was brought to my attention that there were possibly board members that had some issue with the rental of facilities to all of us residents that were part of the organizing committee, because the title on our banner was Our House of Worship, which was the Jersey City Nanak Nam Jahaj Godwa, because there is no house of worship for Sikhs in Monroe. So being that it was a nonprofit event from the tri-state, we listed it as the Jersey City Games, basically our, our home of worship. I'd like to ask, at this moment in front of your residents, if there are any board members that had any issue with that event? There was an Oprah request filed by a citizen asking for my personal information, and it was brought to our attention that it was possibly racially motivated and biased. That's what led to quite a few questions for us. I am also a member of, and appointed by Mayor Pucci on the Human Relations Commission, so we're talking about diversity today. I would like to know the diversity numbers for the school board, all of the school board employees, including our schools. I would like to know the numbers of the students that come from a visible minority, because as Ajay just said, we do make, we made up 12% of the population back in 2010. Four years later, I'm sure we are much larger in terms of the visibility in our schools. So we would like to bring to your attention and request that the board provide us with your diversity numbers. We would like to know diversity statistics for teachers, specifically students to teachers, to see, it's been known and proven facts that children deal well with people of the same ethnicity and, and culture. What kind of numbers we have in the township regarding that? And thirdly, and I'm cutting it close and I'm talking fast, I also understand that there was possibly an EEOC violation made against the board, or I'm sorry, the school district, that I don't know if it's true or not, would just like to know the details of that, if it was, and what type of a fine was levied against the town, if it did happen. If it didn't, it, it's a mute point. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gorski, do you want to answer that question?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. A lot of the information that you requested pertaining to demographics is available on a New Jersey report called the School Report Card. If you have any specific questions that I can help you with, by all means, please visit my office and fill out an open public records request, and I'll give you any documentation that we have accumulated in the office on that information. We have reports for affirmative action policies and so on that are required by the state, and we could probably extract information from those to satisfy you in that regard. As far as your inquiry into a EEOC complaint, equal employment opportunity As far as your inquiry into an EEOC complaint, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, the school district, and I'm not speaking for the township, because we are a separate entity, the school district received one complaint recently from a teacher who applied for a position after the posting had closed, but felt that they were overlooked for the position, and took their claim to the EEOC. The claim was dismissed, and there was no fine in accordance with that action. That is the only EEOC matter that I could find that's on our records in the central office.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Bruce Rosensky, and hello, Cam. I'm the Oprah fileer. Just to level set and to bring this conversation around, the, okay, so just to level set and bring this conversation around. In light of looking at the recent events with the rental of our public school grounds, brings to issue that the taxpayers are carrying a tremendous amount of liability. If, God forbid, somebody were to get hurt with a facilities-related issue, we're getting sued. It's the taxpayers that are going to have that liability, it's the taxpayers that carry that liability, okay? So now, I'm sitting there as a taxpayer, saying, but why do I want that liability? If you're renting the school grounds for not-for-profit. So basically, you're taking my Maserati for a drive, beating it all up, and then coming back saying, oop, I dinged the doors. It makes no sense. Run it like a business. If you're going to rent out, if you're going to rent out America's school facilities available, ask the taxpayers to carry a very large burden as a result, as a result with the possibility of a liability lawsuit from somebody getting hurt from the facilities, well, then you need to compensate us. You can't just rent this stuff out and say, have a good time, somebody gets hurt, oh, taxpayers, go pay the bill. That's not fair to us, okay? So with that, I propose three things. First and foremost, a thorough background check on any organization that is going to rent our facilities, okay? The organization and the event needs to be in the best interest of the community at large. Second, there should be a zero, and I mean zero tolerance policy for breach of contract, okay? Because when a contract is breached, you're putting us, again, the taxpayer, on the hook for a potential lawsuit. I don't want that. I pay enough, I pay over 28 grand a year in taxes, I don't want them going up anymore. So, zero tolerance. You breach the contract, the event is terminated. With that, additionally, the members of the School Board of Education, the employees who are facilitating these events, need to be empowered to shut the event down. They should not feel pressured from the mayor's office or anyone else's office that they need to keep the event going. There should be zero repercussions upon these folks for doing the right thing. Additionally, there should be a requirement that the Monroe Township Police have a presence at these events. In the event that there's illegal or illicit activity, it needs to be shut down. You can't allow it to continue. You're basically gambling with our money, and it's not fair. Third and final, back to my original point, make it buck, okay? Our taxes continue to go up. I joined this community in 2001, my taxes were 6,700. My last tax bill was over 28 grand. 55% of it is going to support our school facilities. I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with you gambling with my money, though, okay? So if we're going to use this, we're going to rent out these facilities, you have to make it a profit center. So, and for members of the community who feel that my moves are racist, or members of the board who felt that I was racist or racially biased, I will gladly make myself available to discuss the situation if anybody wants to chat afterwards. Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you for your comments, and we will take them under advisement.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I respond?
We have to go through everybody in the public who wishes to speak first. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is Brian Betts. I'm the new superintendent in Jamesburg. Just wanted to put a face to the name. One of my goals this year, working with the Board of Education, is to bridge the gap between our district and your district. You talk about buying iPads. We're looking to procure technology. It makes sense if we do the same thing that you do. We want to prepare our students to come into ninth grade and to really just fly, and there's been a gap there. I felt it, the teachers have felt it. So my goal this year is to close that gap. Reach out to your superintendent, we're going to meet, talk about things, sharing things, sharing services, sharing curriculum, visitations of our teachers coming to Monroe, Monroe teachers coming to Jamesburg. I'm very excited about the possibility of doing this, because I think it behooves us as educators to help our students achieve at great heights, and we need to start talking, having that dialogue. We started that dialogue, and I'm looking forward to the good things that come from those discussions. So, again, Rob has been a terrific board member in Jamesburg. He's the one pushing me to make those connections. We have a great relationship. The Board of Education is anxious to do that work, and so are our teachers, and our students will definitely benefit from that. So, again, if you ever need anything from me, I can be reached either through Rob, online, our website, my email is there. You'll probably see me routinely at these meetings, just to hear what's going on in your district, again, to close that gap, increase communication that'll benefit our students. So, thank you.
Well, welcome to Jamesburg and Monroe.
Yes.
I understand that you have not been able to see the high school yet, and I'm sure Mr. V will be very excited to show you around, because your students will be here, and you should know what we have to offer them, and I'm sure that you will enjoy the tour very much.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian.
Anyone else from the public?
My name is Dr. Gagandip Singh, 43 Linwood Drive, Canada on the road. Just by way of introduction, the reason, some of the concepts and the conversation today is really dear to my heart. We're talking a lot about diversity. I, by training and by practice, am a board-certified child adolescent psychiatrist. And in my work, I work with a lot of kids who deal with depression, anxiety, very serious issues. And I know in the state of New Jersey, there's been more and more involvement and knowledge about the concept of, you know, bullying, and how New Jersey has a zero tolerance policy. And I wanted to kind of bring that back to the diversity conversation for a moment, because as we continue to diversify as a community, and it's not just about Indian or Sikh population, just in general, I think the understanding of that diversity, the understanding of those cultures, how someone might appear different due to their faith, for example, those are very, very important concepts for us to coexist as a community. And when there's things that are singling one person or a group of people out, they can feel bullied, they can feel harassed, and that can lead to a lot more than just, you know, some words exchanged in the hallway. So, kind of speaking from personal experience, speaking from the heart, being someone who's obviously identifiable, how I look, I wanted to speak to the diversity and talk about, or ask the board to speak a little bit about, what kind of diversity programs and what do we kind of involve in the school curriculum to help educate? And I think some of the ideas of looking at the meal plan offerings, or looking at holidays to be celebrated, is very, very vital, because it gives us a larger kind of understanding and a recognition more evident, okay, there are other community members here. But I think in terms of educating staff and people who are hands-on, working with the kids every day, what initiatives do we have as a community? And, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to that?
If I may, and this is almost on a personal level. There's no doubt in my mind that, and I guess I'm speaking as a building principal now, and not just as an interim superintendent, but you should know this. I believe that every principal and the staff members in it, is that our curriculum is very, very diverse, and it recognizes so many of the different religions and backgrounds and ethnicities. There's no doubt about that, that it's in the curriculum there. I think what's unfortunate tonight, as I'm just looking at, out at the audience, is that I would hope, and let me just give you some background, as a previous principal of Appleguard School, probably is that my East or Asian Indian population is probably about maybe 52 or 53%. There's not a difference from the kids to the kids, from the teachers to the students, from administration to the students, to the population, et cetera, is that I don't see the difference. I really don't. And I think that Monroe, we should all take pride as a Board of Education, and also as the administrative team, as far as the teachers, is that we've accepted that diversity in our community. That's there, there's no doubt about that. I think it would be very unfortunate, as I'm just, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn right now, I'm just speaking from my heart, is that obviously in this particular situation, is that we had a polarization in the community, just because of an event. How sad would that be? When obviously, you know, I understand that obviously, you know, maybe there's a point of view from the organization that's been represented here, there's a point of view from obviously that gentleman that is there, and everybody's entitled to that. But please, I'm imploring all of you, is the fact that as we go forward with this, don't let this polarize our community. Please don't do that. I think as far as, you know, celebration of holidays, et cetera, that's already in the buildings. As far as, you know, traditions, religious celebrations, that's all there, that's all part of the curriculum, the activities. The kids don't see the difference, and I believe that they don't. I would just ask, is that the adults just, you know what, just think before you act, please? Don't allow this to be a polarizing situation. Now I'll go back to the superintendent. Certainly, we can look up as far as, and I can respond to any questions that you have. You can come to my office, and I can point out any information that you need. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'd just like to say, too, that our high school, from elementary to middle to the high school, we've gotten so much recognition, it wouldn't be possible without everybody in this community joining together to be where we are today. So I'll leave it at that.
And I failed to say, I thought about saying, and I've obviously forgot in front of the microphone, that I want to thank everybody for your role in the amazing accolades that Monroe Township has been able to garner in the last few years, and the growth that we've had. And it is no easy task. We respect that, I respect that entirely, but I just had that question, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Tesler?
Ira Tesler, 11 Elia Drive. Just a quick question, my own clarification on building use, because I don't know what's going on here, but when an outside organization rents space, don't they have to provide their own insurance? Well, I could be wrong, but I don't, my memory may not be good.
Yes. Evening, Mr. Tesler, again. When an outside use-of-building requestor wants to rent our facilities, we have a particular policy that the board adopted and addressed no less than four times in the last year, posted on our website, and one of the requirements, as you stated, is a certificate of insurance holding the district harmless in the event. Now, there could be circumstances where the district could still find some liability. For example, if our facilities are derelict and someone gets hurt, we have an unpatched pothole that remained there, and we didn't address it, and someone hurt themselves on it, even with that use-of-building request, the district could still be held liable for negligence. We have not in the past. We have been sued from outside organizations that have used our facilities, and through a lengthy court process, we prevailed. So the insurance does hold the district harmless, but it's not 100% bulletproof. Attorneys are very crafty at finding negligence and spreading it through the suit process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, Board President and members of the board. I really want to thank you, all of you.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Name is Arvinder Minhas, address 2 Marion Court. I like the gentleman's statement, saying it's very easy to talk on this side, when you come on this side, it's different, and I can understand your roles and responsibilities, all of you. I just want to ask a question, that what hiring initiatives has school board employed to recruit more diversified staff, since the community is there? And what is the current hiring process? And where are the job openings? That's just my question. And I have a statement also to make on, because I was a part of the, one of the organizers when Cam and Sunny and other folks were organizing this event, and just want to make a statement for, to the public who is here to saying that liability on the school and the whole township, yes, we followed the process and the rental amount, and the financial payments were made as posted by the board and the School of Education. Plus, the insurance as Mr. Michael, sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, apologize for that, was also done, and on top of it, we still have a proof and insurance that we took additional, school requirement was for a million dollar per incident. We took $2 million additional insurance, not recommended by the board, on our own, just in case if there is any incident, so that board and the school and town is not responsible for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wish to respond about the hiring practices?
Thank you, thank you.
Or do you want Mike to?
Michael. As the district's affirmative action officer, I volunteered for that position years ago with a vacancy that was created in the district, because I believe very strongly in the affirmative action policies, and supporting the board and protecting the board by making sure that they're followed. Part of the affirmative action plan is reviewing the demographics and hiring, and diversifying staff accordingly. You may not know this, but we had an African-American superintendent just recently, before his resignation. And there were significant outreaches to attract minority candidates to the board, with the recognition of the changing demographics in the community. For example, we provided professional development workshops and visited predominantly minority colleges, in an effort to recruit teachers from those organizations. We also advertised in predominantly minority papers with our positions, and our affirmative action statement is on every job posting that we have, it's on every purchase order that we send out to every vendor, it's on every code of conduct at the school, every material you'll find, basically with Monroe Township Board of Education on it, will have a statement affirming to that. So, the numbers are not where we want them to be, and the effort continues, but we are making every effort that we believe is reasonable, and trying to attract minority positions within the district.
Thank you.
And madam, with regard to the insurance rental, I just want to be clear, the group did fully comply with the use-of-building requirements as per the policy, and in fact, I refreshed the board's memory that at the last board meeting, there was a recognition of receipt of a donation from the organization of $1,000 as a sign of goodwill.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Konvat Deep Singh Aiden. I'm an internist and addiction specialist. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Monroe Schools and the Monroe School Board. Both my kids go to Monroe Schools, and this was the first school, we're very fortunate to have awesome teachers. So thank you, first of all. We feel right at home over here. We feel that our religion is respected, our teachers frankly have been fantastic. We couldn't have selected a better place. I think part of the fear, or the little concern my community has had since some comments were made after the event, was because we have been targeted after 9/11, because we look very different, okay? And there was a tragedy in Oak Tree, Wisconsin, where somebody went on rampage, simply because we look very, very different. And I, and you know what it is, it is a cultural thing we have had to face. So part of the reason that Cam got concerned, I think, is because when somebody makes comment, we automatically try to protect ourselves and our children. And no disrespect to my fellow Monroe resident, we understand your concerns, you know, we just want to reassure that we are, as a community, part of the Monroe fabric, part of the American culture. One of my second cousins is an ex-marine. We are Americans, we look different, but we are Americans, and I'm proud to say I'm an American. I just want anybody who looks at somebody who is brown-skinned and wears a turban, just remember, there's a reason why we do it. It's not because we want to look separate, it's our culture, it's our religion. We're proud of that, and we're proud of being American. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Homoki, 61 Hoffman Road. I know it's been said a number of times before, but I'd like to really congratulate the board for finally getting to the top 100. That's really great. And I just want to say that it's not only this board, but a number of boards before you, they all have worked very hard for their children, and I think it shows. I'm a little bit prejudiced now, and when I say this, that there are a lot of things that did us in, in other words, moved us under 100, but I think the turning point was the high school that we have. With the programs that we have in the high school, it's a high school second to none, and I think all parents, when they look at the high school, they say, this is where I want my children to go to. It's the best around. And I hope that our number will lower a little bit next year and the year after. It's one thing to get under 100, it's another thing to stay under It's one thing to get under one hundred, it's another thing to stay under one hundred. So, again, congratulations, and I'm extremely happy about it.
Thank you, Mr. Homoki.
My name is Sunny Keila, and I live at four Kestwick Circle. So since we're talking about diversity, one of my suggestions here today is to add a diversity, or celebrate a diversity day, maybe once a year, when we can all learn about, you know, different cultures, backgrounds. Because, you know, everyone here, you know, we want, you know, all these communities are together, and we just need to understand, have better understanding, so that, you know, comments that were made after the games, you know, just because of that misunderstanding, and we can prevent that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
Thank you. Just in response to Bruce's comments, yes, we had adequate insurance, yes, we paid for the facilities. I think the board, we ended up paying about seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the use of facilities for two days. On top of that, we gave a thousand dollar donation, of which five thousand dollars was for janitorial staff, and the additional a thousand dollars that we paid for the additional cleanup, which we happily and readily paid, once it was requested. And on top of it, wanted to thank everybody for allowing us to really highlight our town. That was the whole purpose of hosting the events here. The events have been going on for twenty-six years, all across New Jersey, and New Jersey has always been host. With our town being so diverse, we wanted this to be the perfect opportunity to highlight and say, look at Monroe, look at what a wonderful town it is, and please, come here, see the diversity that's accepted and embraced here. So that was the intention of bringing the events to Monroe. We did have police presence, so in terms of requirements for the board, we did fulfill those needs, we had police presence, we paid for the facilities, and we had more than adequate insurance. On top of that, we cleaned up the facilities ourselves as well, and put the waste in the appropriate receptacles. So I just wanted to clarify, from an organizational standpoint, I have, you know, Jerry Tamboro, council president, Betty Schneider, both came to the event, saw how peaceful and wonderful it was. It was kids eighteen and under, and competing in team sports, and really talking about uniting as a team. So it was a great event, we really appreciated bringing it to Monroe, we thank you, but we wanted to make sure that there was clarity in how we use the facilities, that we respected our town and our facilities, that our taxpaying dollars do go to, and understand that there's a need to pay for that, and we did that adequately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Name and address for the record, please.
First Rosinski, four Majestic Woods Drive. So just to clarify, this, I do understand you made restitution, and I applaud that, thank you, it was very good. I do understand that when you filed your application or reviewed all the documentation...
Could you please speak into the microphone?
You followed all the proper processes and procedures. What I'm questioning the board on is the logic behind renting these facilities out for no profit. It makes no sense, because there is an intrinsic liability that the taxpayers are receiving. If a bleacher collapsed, toilet explodes, I don't know, if someone trips in a pothole, who knows? We're getting sued. That's the bottom line. So before, and what I, what I, what I, I'm begging you to do is to think about this as a business. If I ran my businesses as you guys are running this, I'd be out of business, okay? That's the reality. You need to run this as a business. If you're gonna rent out our public grounds, and ask the taxpayers to be on the hook for a potential lawsuit, make us a buck. Maybe you could offset your four hundred something thousand dollars, you know, you need to pay for your iPads, so, maybe you could do that. But you need to treat this as a business, and not assume the taxpayer is A-OK with taking on that liability, because me, as a taxpayer, I'm not okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Satvinder Singh, two Almond Ridge Court. I'd just like to make a couple of comments and reply to Mr. Bruce's comments. Not everything is a business. I think we run this school, school is not a business, we educate our children. I lived for twenty years in South Brunswick. We had the same event for many, many years in South Brunswick. This event used to bring unity in the community. I was also a member of the HRC in South Brunswick, and we used to have Community Unity Day. Those events were also on township properties, schools, and all those things. There could be liability with our own citizens, our own citizens can sue us, too. So it doesn't mean that having those events have a business value. They have value to unite our communities, bring the community together, and have our citizens unite with each other. So we need to look from that point of view, that what is the value it brings to our community, and how it unites us, rather than just looking, can we make money from it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public forum. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Presioso?
Can I say something?
If you would like.
I would like to thank all the members that came out tonight. We need a forum like this, so we could understand and listen to your complaints or just suggestions. But I'd like to say one thing, we have so many different types of ethnic backgrounds in our schools, our teachers see them as students, and that's the only color they see them as. But I'd like to comment that gentleman made there, we're all Americans, and we should treat each other like that. If there's a problem, we should show up at board meetings. I would like to see a couple of people come to board meetings and speak up. There's plenty of times we're alone here. We need the public to come out and explain to us what they feel is wrong, or what they feel is right, or give us a compliment, or whatever. So, that's just my comment. I'd love to see a lot of people here, I think you should come back and come to board meetings and speak up for your kids. Not just your organizations or your religion, speak up for your kids. Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Poy?
Just a quick question. Did the school suffer any financial loss as a result of this event?
The answer is no. All the district's costs associated with this event, and in compliance with the building use policy, were covered through the charges passed to the renter. And on top of that, the renter, in this case, as a sign of goodwill, gave the district a thousand dollar donation.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have had other organizations that might have a religious or ethnic affiliation that have made use of school facilities in the past?
That was a key consideration that we received advice on from our attorneys in the past, was that the schools can be open to different religious events. We have High Holy Days use our facilities, we had a church use our facilities, we teach Hindi courses in our schools, as long as the taxpayers' dollars are not going toward the purpose. And that's what this policy was designed to ensure.
Thank you.
Mr. Nolstein?
To applaud everyone for coming out, it's great to see people. We sit up here sometimes, and we think we're doing our best, but without the feedback from the public, we don't really know. So I appreciate you coming out tonight. With regards to the school use, it's my understanding, though, we also provide the school use as a community service. It's not really supposed to be a revenue generator, it's mostly revenue neutral. Is that an accurate assessment?
Yes, this was, building use was not formed to make money for the school district.
Right, because these taxpayers are the ones that, it's your school, basically, and it's your right to use that, any way that you deem applicable within our rules. And it sounds like that's exactly what happened, so.
And I could tell you that our facilities are probably used seven days a week, almost three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and sometimes it's hard to even get something booked in our facilities, because the, the, the community has such a desire to use our facilities. I'm sorry, closed session, public forum has been closed. Any other questions by the board? Mr. Kaufman?
Sorry. With the comment about running this like a business, if you come to any board meetings, I say that all the time. I mean, we want to try and do everything where we can legally to be in a revenue generating enterprise. The issue here is, we're still a nonprofit, too, right? So nonprofit to nonprofit, there are certain things that we can use and target for an enterprise fund to generate money, and there are other things that we cannot. This is one of those things where we cannot. But to your point, I'm all about trying to make as much money coming into the district to alleviate the tax burden as we can. This just happens to be one of those things where we're kind of hand-tied, so.
Ms. Antalis?
I just want to also thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think this was important, this was good dialogue, there were some good comments, and it was really good for everybody to come together, and we need to move forward with this, and keep it going.
Mr. Presioso?
Is there a deposit towards any damage or anything?
In accordance with the policy, all fees are paid in advance.
But no deposit in case of major damage or anything like that?
No. The certificate of insurance should cover that, but there's no, no, like, safety, security deposit, that's collected per the policy.
Ms. Sarminio?
I'll be very brief. I respect everyone who comes to the microphone. Whether we agree with people or not, everyone has a right to their position, and has a right to explain their situation. So I would, I would ask that we, again, move forward and have mutual respect for those who disagree with us, and perhaps we can understand each side. I think the kind of community we would like to have in Monroe, certainly, I've lived here for almost thirty years, and one of the heartfelt beauties of this community is that we can have a discussion with each other, speak to each other, and disagree respectfully, and maybe understand the other person's viewpoint. It's not, I, I would like it not to ever be one-sided in either direction. People have their opinions or their concerns that don't necessarily go to something very nefarious or very negative. I, I recognize the position and the concern about any fear that that might have, especially in light of tomorrow being nine eleven. So I respect that a great deal. But please, I think we have a wonderful community, and every opportunity we have to discuss things with each other is an opportunity to have a wholesome place. And thank you all for your speak, those we disagree with, and those with whom we agree. So thank you all.
And picking back, piggybacking on Michelle, anytime you can have a public cordial discussion, whether you agree or you don't agree, it's the discussion, and that makes your community even better. So if there's no more comments or questions by the board, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, seven o'clock PM, Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Kaufman?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antalis, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.